Pastor Andrew Foss of Bethel Church leads us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Absolutely. Let's pray. Jesus, as we pray to you this evening, we are thankful that you hear our prayers. Thank you that we don't have to wake you up, get your attention. You are alert and always on the move doing what you do. So, thank you. Thank you that we can call to you tonight. We give you thanks for this city, for the chance to live here, to work here, for good neighbors, even those listed here tonight for this life-saving award. Thank you for good neighbors like Guy Taylor and the recognition that we have for him tonight as well. Thank you, Lord, for the privilege of the people, living with the people we do in this community. So, thank you. Lord, I ask for the officials here in this room, as they think about the matters before them, the things that concern the people of this community, help them, give them wisdom. I ask in their deliberations that this council would be wise, help them to think rightly and fairly on the issues before them, and through them may the good of our community be accomplished. So, again, thank you for those who serve and lead us in this room. Bless them, bless their families, and bless our community. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the God of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's Monday, October 4th, 2021. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to Order. Roll call.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. There's a couple changes to the agenda this evening. Scott has asked that item number nine and item number, and that be removed from the consent agenda, and there's a clarification on item number 12 on the consent agenda. And then also, under new business, we'll have a discussion on the Westridge Mall redevelopment agreement modification. So, those are the changes I know of. Bill, are there any others? Nope.
You've got them.
Thank you. With that, we can accept that agenda.
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anthony, thinking Caroline, all in favor of a motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. A motion carries. Tonight, I think, we will move to the petitions and communications portion of the agenda. We have a lot of people in the audience, and it's not, it's not always a good thing to have so many people want to come visit you at the city council meeting. But it is tonight, and so, we're very, very pleased to recognize five individuals, six individuals. So, we have a life-saving award, and we're going to turn it over to our Chief of Public Safety. But I just wanted to say, there's a life-saving award tonight for Dustin Nguyen, Todd Grothe, Anita Boatright, Mike Chinowski, Kaylee Ekman, Rob Foreman, Abram Silbernagle, and of course, also our Chief of Public Safety, Kyle Bergen. So, Kyle, thank you for everything you're doing, and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you, Your Honor. I couldn't agree more that, especially in this chamber, is a lot of times we dwell on the things that divide us, but I think tonight should be a night that we celebrate what makes our community a great place to live, and it truly is people. People like the individuals seated next to me tonight. Approximately a month ago, at a soccer game, and I think each of these individuals, as they're looking at me like, oh dear God, I hope he doesn't ask me to say anything tonight. I think they all feel that they did nothing special. They do this every day, this is part of their job. They're very happy to do their job. But I do think, when you look at it from a community standpoint, it was a very special evening. I think for a number of reasons. We had the soccer game, the last thing you expect at a high school soccer game is a seventeen-year-old individual to have some type of cardiac incident. And I know our athletic trainer, Todd Grothe, is at all of these sporting events, or nearly all of them, and I think probably that night, he was probably expecting maybe to deal with somebody with a concussion, or something, you know, maybe a little less severe. But I think it's through the community partnerships that we have with Lake Region Hospital, with Ringdell Ambulance, and with our school district, that we had such a positive outcome that night. And I'll just say this, too, for Anita and Dustin, you know, just both nurses, but just two individuals that are at the game. As spectators, they observed that Todd, when dealing with this player, was experiencing something more than just what you would expect at a high school soccer game, that this quickly escalated into a cardiac event. And then Rob Foreman and Abram Silbernagle, the two officers that happened to be working that day very close to the soccer game, and were able to get an AED and oxygen to the field. I think when I look back at the call, it was under two minutes from the initial call. So, tonight, we'd like to present these life-saving awards to these individuals. So, the first one is Mike Chinowski. And then Kaylee Ekman. And then from Lake Region Hospital, Todd Grothe. And Anita Boatright from Lake Region. And also from Lake Region, Dustin Nguyen. And from the Police Department, Officer Rob Foreman. And also from the Police Department, Sergeant Abram Silbernagle. So, again, I'd just like to...
Chief, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there's one other award there. And I was at that game that night, and to appreciate everything that you all do every day, as the chief said, is something that we probably don't recognize enough. To watch that unfold, to watch you guys work in the time manner you did, was something that made me proud of the community. But it was the chief who initiated the CPR, when I think we all recognized that moment. So, it's, someone please give the chief his award as well. And can we just all say thank you?
Yes.
(Applause).
That's fine.
If you guys want to slip outside, go quick, and we can get a good photo.
Amen. I was just wondering who is watching our streets, the officers in there.
Right.
I guess so.
What'd you say, Mayor? It missed it.
All right. So, under petitions and communications, we do have one more resolution we need to acknowledge tonight, and that's the retirement and years of service for our Public Works Director and volunteer firefighter, Guy Taylor. He wears a lot of hats in the community, but those are the, they all recognize him as. So, I'm going to read this resolution. Whereas Len Taylor submitted his intent to retire from the Fergus Falls Fire Department effective August 26th, 2021, and whereas Len began his service as a firefighter to the city of Fergus Falls on January 6th, 2011, and whereas Len has held numerous roles in the Fergus Falls Fire Department, including firefighter and assistant driver operator, whereas Len's full-time position of Public Works Director greatly enhanced the knowledge of other department members regarding city infrastructure and operations. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, to accept Len Taylor's resignation from the Fergus Falls Fire Department, and thank him for his ten years of dedicated service to the city of Fergus Falls. That resolution was offered by Councilman Jim Fish, seconded by Councilwoman Krista Hagberg, and was adopted by the following vote. Roll call.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under the consent agenda, there are eleven items remaining, other than, in addition to the two that I mentioned, number nine and 12, that have already been asked to be removed. Does anyone like to discuss any of the other items individually? Seeing none, we could, I would entertain a resolution accepting the other eleven items. Roll call for that, Your Honor. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under the consent agenda, there are eleven items remaining, other than, in addition to the two that I mentioned, number nine and 12, that have already been asked to be removed. Does anyone like to discuss any of the other items individually? Seeing none, we could, I would entertain a resolution accepting the other eleven items. Roll call for that, Your Honor. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved, and we say thank you, Guy, for your years of service, and we're glad that we're not saying goodbye. We're just saying goodbye in that way. All right. Under public hearings, this evening, we have a, one public hearing for the abatement of property located at 634 West Stanton Avenue, and we'll call on Guy Taylor, Public Works Director. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening. Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for that. It was a privilege to serve in that capacity. So, before you tonight is a resolution we're seeking from the council to order abatement of a hazardous building. There's a fire in a house at 634 West Stanton back in June of 2018. To date, there has been no attempts from the property owners to bring that building back into a state of livable condition. Back in July of this year, there is an inspection done of the property with the fire chief, fire inspector, building official, and the code enforcement officer, and they, upon that inspection, determined that the building meets the definition of a nuisance, according to our city ordinance and state statute as well. So, we're seeking a resolution for, to order to abate this nuisance property, which would be demolition of the structure on the property. Ralph, may I have something to add to?
Yeah.
Thanks, Guy.
Thank you, Guy. And you've been provided in your packets, April's report of, I think your report is dated August 23rd, 2021, which included seventeen photographs taken back in July 19th, 2021, showing the condition of the property. Included in that information is that, verifying information that these are in fact the property owners and are owners of record, supporting the determination that the building does meet a hazardous building definition within the meaning of state statute, that they constitute fire hazards and hazards to the public. So, moving forward, we're seeking an order of the council to order the demolition of this building, give the property owner the opportunity to demolish it. The order would be, give the property owner thirty days from the date that they get a copy of this order, and if they don't demolish it, then we will be taking action with the District Court, for an order from the District Court authorizing what's called summary enforcement, authorizing the city to take the building down, and if the person does not respond to court action or provide an answer to the, to the city within twenty days of getting served with the order from the City Council, then we basically will proceed on a default basis with the District Court. So, your action today is, A, to hold a public hearing and see if anyone is here to comment on it and say anything about it, B, if you agree with the resolution, to adopt the resolution, which authorizes the process to start, and ultimately may authorize me to go to District Court to get a court approval on the demolition of these buildings.
Thank you, Ralph. Yes, Guy?
To add to that, if we do go to the point of demolition, we would invoice the property owners, and if payment is not received, it would be certified to the taxes.
That's correct.
All right. So, with that, we will open up the public hearing regarding the abatement of the property located at 634 West Stanton Avenue. Anyone wishing to speak to this issue, please step to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and it's back to the council. We will be looking for a resolution ordering the necessary corrections to this property.
Call for that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you, Brent. Any questions for Ralph or Guy? Roll call, please.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under the consent agenda, there are eleven items remaining, other than, in addition to the two that I mentioned, number nine and 12, that have already been asked to be removed. Does anyone like to discuss any of the other items individually? Seeing none, we could, I would entertain a resolution accepting the other eleven items. Roll call for that, Your Honor. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number nine is a resolution accepting a reimbursement grant from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources for Ferber Park in the amount of $78,000, and Councilmember Kwame had a question on that, I believe, or a comment?
Yeah, I'll make a comment, and I'd introduce the resolution.
Sure.
If you want to get a second for it.
Thank you. We'll get that resolution, someone like to second. Thank you. Anthony, go ahead. Scott?
Sometimes we'll hear from folks that have questions about the parks in town, and that there's sometimes comments made to the effect that, we've got plenty of parks, and we're putting an awful lot of our resources into parks. And so, now here's an opportunity to do something else in another park, and I guess I wanted to make a couple comments on that. One is, in the first place, the parks are one of the real draws for this town. It's a real positive thing to have good parks, and this particular one, because it's sort of a specific use park for people that do bicycling, tends to attract people that are into bicycling, and not necessarily picnickers or whatever, but it's something that people that are within the circle of bicyclers are attracted to and come from far away to experience to be a part of. So, I think it's a good thing for the city that we have this park and that we have this opportunity to improve it at a far reduced cost. We've got a grant of $78,000 that's going to require us to match $26,000, and when we can get an asset at one-third the cost or one-fourth the cost, I think that's a good investment. And so, I want to make the point that I think we're getting a lot for our money on this one. In the details, we do have to commit to maintaining this additional park trail area for twenty years. I've talked with our Public Works Director as to just what that would really amount to, and it amounts to running a mower through the trail a couple of times a year. It's not a particularly significant cost. And so, that work that's been done by volunteers up till now, we would expect will continue to be done by those volunteers, and I call on them to keep it up. But knowing that, you know, nineteen years from now, maybe they don't, we're going to still have to do it, and if that were to happen, you know, it might cost us a couple hundred dollars in, in staff mower time, but it isn't going to be a significant maintenance expense. And so, just trying to get ahead of that conversation a little bit, and bang the drum for a good investment.
Thanks, Scott. Yes, Bill.
And to chime in just a little bit with that, you as a council gave Pedal Fergus Falls the ability to apply for additional grants to come up with the matching funds. So, we already have received the $26,000 matching funds, it's in the bank, so as a city, no city funds are going into it even in the matching. So, that's great news.
That's very good news.
Yes.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Scott. So, we have a resolution in a second. Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number 12 is a resolution calling for the creation of a redevelopment TIF district for the former mill site. I believe this is a clarification, but we'll call on our Community Development Manager, Clara Beck. Good evening, Clara.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpeople. Yes, so this is just a clarification. We're calling for a public hearing tonight. We had earlier called for a public hearing for the same district. We had it set initially for October 18th. We are switching that date to November 1st to better accommodate the financial analysis that's being done by Baker Tilly. You also have on your desk some updated resolution language. Along with the request for the redevelopment TIF, the city also submitted a grant to Deed for a redevelopment grant, which would help him do further work on the site. That grant requires very specific language to be passed in the resolution, and I left out some of that specific language. So, what we're clarifying tonight through this updated resolution is essentially that if the project doesn't happen, somebody is still on the hook for paying the grant back. So, what we're saying is, yes, we understand that, and we are still agreeing to apply for the grant. So, we've been back and forth with the deed a little bit. I'm still really hopeful that we're going to get this grant for Mr. Bartram, but we just have to do that updated resolution to make sure that everybody's on the same page about paying, paying the grant back if it comes to that.
Thanks, Clara. Does anyone have any questions for Clara? Someone like, do we need a resolution change?
Probably two resolutions. One for the hearing and one...
So, first one, would someone like to offer a resolution amending the date of the public hearing from October 18th to November 1st?
I'll go with that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Anthony. Any questions on that? Roll call on that, please.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved, and the second resolution would just be clarified in the language, in our resolution, that would then be passed on to, in the development agreement, if we get to that point in that development. I'll offer that. Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, this night, we have a, we need a resolution introducing the sale of property owned at 725 West Maple Street, and I believe Bill has a slight update for us from when this was first discussed Wednesday morning.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Andrew did send out a memo to you in regards to this change. The inspection was completed, there were some deficiencies that were found, so coming to a resolution of that would be dropping the price $3,000 from what was presented to you. An offering price was $145,000, so dropping that down $3,000. We still come out ahead $7,000 when it's done, rather than us, the city, going in and making repairs and whatnot. The purchaser has agreed to do that, and then reducing that price by that. So, tonight, just introducing, because we can't approve the sale at one meeting, we at least need to do that at two different meetings, so, and Ralph, it would be entering into a purchase agreement then, correct, tonight?
That's correct.
So, we can do that through a resolution?
You may do that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Brent. Any questions? Roll call, please.
You don't need a resolution tonight. You introduced it, and you got a first and a second, and then you can vote on it the next day. Got...
Sounds, because we have to wait ten days to actually...
Yeah, you had to wait ten days before you say yes.
Okay. Sounds good. So, we, that has been introduced. Thank you for that clarification. Under presentation of claims, tonight, we have claims in the amount of $3,278,121.70. If there's any questions, we will direct them to our City Finance Director and Acting City Administrator, Bill Samar.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thanks, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Justice.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. There is no old or unfinished business, board, community, or department reports, or reports from staff administrative officers that I'm aware of. Under new business, we have one item, and that would be a discussion on the Westridge Mall Development Agreement Modification, and we will call on Alex Schwartzoff from Interstate Engineering. Good evening, Alice. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I guess, I've been asked to come here tonight to speak on behalf of the owners of the Westridge Mall. All of you, I'm sure, are aware of the process we've been through in trying to replant and split off a portion of the mall that currently includes the Dollar Tree and an additional portion. It's been, it's been a bit of a process, and it's kind of been a little bit of a fluid process as, as we've gone through. So, the amendment the owner is asking for this evening to the developer's agreement is that the original developer's agreement included the requirement that he split and provide individual water and sewer services to these properties. I believe it was September, we did an amendment to provide some additional time to do that work. With where his deal is right now, that is just a non-starter with his buyer, and so he was asking that that, that requirement be waived and removed from the developer's agreement. His intention in place of that would be to sign an agreement with the buyer, the new tenant, or the new owner, that would require whoever owns the mall, those owners currently, to provide those services as they are currently. So, right now, the water and sewer services both come from within the other portions of the mall. It would be an agreement similar to what they signed with the owners of the theater when they split that portion off. And the reason for this is largely just that, between myself and the owner of the mall, we've been working with, trying to round up contractors since April. This has been incredibly busy summer, and materials are hard to come by, and he's pushed his deal off and pushed his deal off, and his buyer is just getting very nervous, and is uncomfortable with all the unknowns on their end. They do have a tenant that's ready to move in, in Harbor Freight, that would take over the other, other portion of this project, they would, of the portion of this property, they would, they intend to keep the Dollar Tree up and running. So, he's just trying to get that deal done, so those things can happen, and at this point, it looks like that deal will fall through if, if he's required to do the water and services, sewer services. I'm sure there's questions.
Thanks, Alex. So, just as a reminder, the reason we required that was basically so that someone's property, water line wasn't frozen, disconnected because of the lack of someone else from taking action. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. Yep. Between that and the ability for the city to shut off for delinquent payments, currently as it stands, if the mall were delinquent in their payments, and that sewer, that water was shut off, it would shut off the theater, the Dollar Tree, this new property, along with the rest of the mall. Dunham's is separate, but the rest of it's all on one service, so...
I have one more. Oh, yeah. I'm sure the council has questions. My other question is, as you mentioned, the theater, and how is this resolved with the sale property to the theater?
So, when the, when the theater bought their portion of the building, the owners of the mall and the owners of theater negotiated agreement that, I believe the city has, at least, that, that require, it's a legal, legal agreement that requires the owners of the mall property to continue to provide services to the theater. So, if anything breaks in the mall property, they have so many days after notification to have that repaired. And so, it would be a similar agreement to that, is what he would be looking to sign with his buyers.
But again, for delinquency, if that's our concern, that doesn't really address that concern.
Right. Because if we, like you say, if we shut off water, we're shutting off those other businesses that are paying their proportion of share, but if the owner of the mall, then we're in essence providing utilities, if they're not being paid by the mall. You know, if they become delinquent, and we say, well, we can't shut them off...
I don't think there's anything that precludes us from shutting water off for non-payment.
Right.
Period. And you would assume that, I mean, I assume that their agreement that they would somehow have between amongst themselves for this shared utilities would address, would address that.
Yes, I believe the one with the theater does address that, that if, if the water was shut off by the city because of lack of payment, then their, their address would be with the owner of the mall and not with the city.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's, it's fine.
I think, I think we would need to see the agreement personally, you know, as you say, I mean, we're trying to be business-friendly on one hand, but the flip side is if somebody doesn't pay their bill, you know, we're not a charity, so, you know, I think we'd have to be clear that the recourse, if, if there is a delinquent bill, then, you know, the city's not going to get the blame. I mean, we'll always get the blame, generally. So, somehow, somehow, I think we need to get the clarification from, and I also think there should be a time period of which it has to get done by, you know, and I'm not sure how... has to get done by, you know, and I'm not sure how we'd enforce that, but...
I would, I would agree, I'd...
Can't sit out there forever.
You know, I, I think that, but movie theater obviously is smart enough to go forward with the purchase, knowing that, so, so there has to be a way to make this agreement work that, you know, that the city is protected, but like Anthony says, I guess we just want to see that agreement, is that, what's the timing on the closing?
Um, I, I don't know the exact date on the closing right now. It was, I mean, it's, it's been pushed a number of times, so it's, it's coming up quickly, but I don't think they would have, I don't think the owners would have an issue with providing that agreement to the city to review. I believe they did that with the theater as well, with similar concerns, so.
Sure. October 19th, Clara's saying is the...
They, they can wait to get a response from the city until October 18th. They were okay with that, but at that point, that's when they really need to make a call on if they can move in.
So would it make sense, that's the meeting of our next council, could we ask them for some sort of agreement that we can review and either accept or not accept at the October 19th?
At the next committee of the hall, so you could see it ahead of time?
Sure.
Certainly.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
And just to add to that, Your Honor, if I may, to Mr. Hicks's point, could we also, I don't know if you word negotiate is right, but get a timeline on when that can be done so it doesn't hold up their closing, but it still has to be accomplished? I mean, I think that was the overall intent of having the agreement, was they needed to separate this, and so I don't know if there'd be something you could work into the contract, say, within two years, or, I mean, I know materials and contracts are hard to get by, but I think that doesn't relinquish them from the responsibility of needing to do it if that's the overall goal.
To, to be clear on that, Councilmember Ernestson, that, what my understanding of the agreement is, they're not requesting a time extension, they're looking to not have any separation of utility services, as it stands right now. So, and I apologize, this is a little bit earlier, we were planning on presenting this council October 18th. I was contacted by the mall owner, time is of the essence based on what I've been told, but because we had the same concerns and everything, we wanted to properly have these agreements in place and everything, therefore we figured tonight anyways, just to introduce this, maybe have some, but it sounds to me the council's wanting this operation easement agreement, along with the red line developers' agreement, before the council for approval on October 18th. Which I think that's, you know, but that was stressed to me this morning when talking with the mall owner.
Yeah, and I was provided just a rough addendum, number one, proposed amendment to the agreement 10 minutes before four.
Yes.
Before I was coming over for the, and I did have an opportunity to speak with the attorney who represents Mr. Graff, and indicate that, you know, the council was going to be busy from four o'clock on. So I do have kind of a rough draft proposal to the addendum, but I think what I hear the council saying is, we would also like to see the shared utility arrangement, agreement or easement, whatever it is that you're entering into, and oh, by the way, there should be some language in there that protects the city.
I think that's...
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I think that will be well received by the, by the owners. As far as, as a timeframe to do the work, I know, I did ask that question of the mall owner to say, you know, is this something that, if it was, you know, we could put it out here and give you to do it? Is, is, in talking with his buyers right now, he does not think that would, that would fly with them. They're just, they're so risk averse, and they, and they see other opportunities to, with their tenants, that they don't want any, because part of, and I will say that the sewer service specifically involves tearing up a portion, a portion of the floor of the mall, so putting that out here will not help them, because they'll get a business in there running and then have to tear up the floor, and that just doesn't work, so, which is, I know, less of a concern for shutting off the water, but, so.
Question, who's, who's actually paying for the work to be done? The buyer or the seller?
It was, the intent was for the seller, or, yeah, for the current owners to, to provide all that work before the purchase agreement, but it just, with the changing situations and the situations of trying to get contractors, it, it hasn't been able to, to happen.
Brent?
I don't know how the infrastructure is inside that, and I understand where the main water comes in, but I'm just curious, as far as dealing with the current owner not paying his utility bills, is there any way where the water comes into each one of those businesses, putting a meter on there, so we can keep track of what they're using and then bill them appropriately for it?
Fire suppression?
Yeah, I mean, there is, there is a, a separate fire suppression line that does come into the back of the Dollar Tree, and that's what we were getting prices and scheduling schedules to get that work done, to do that very thing.
Yeah, because then, I mean, then he's already agreeing that if something goes wrong inside the mall, he'll take care of that, but this way here, at least then, we'd be getting our, you know, we'd be making sure monthly that we got our bills if we were able to put a meter inside and then use that to charge accordingly for sewer service. And then that way there, you know, this hopefully would get taken care of.
Yeah, and that's, like I said, that's what we've been investigating, and that's just the work that, it sounds like right now, from what I've been told, that if that's the requirement, then the sale will not happen.
Yeah.
So this prospective sale, what, what exactly would that be occupied? How much, how much of the mall, or...
So it's the existing Dollar Tree, and that, what I've been told is the old thrifty white, if that helps. It's the sec, it's the portion just west of Dollar Tree through the hallway, in that there's another entry, an exterior entrance there. So it would be that portion, and then back, even with about the back of the Dollar Tree.
Okay, and, but Dollar Tree would be staying?
Dollar Tree would stay, yep, and then they're gonna redevelop the other portion, and what they're, what they've told us now is that they've got Harbor Freight on board to move in there, and it sounds like they're itching to get in there.
And what, so what's, this feels like it's just being kind of dumped in our laps, and, you know, hurry up and get this done, even though, I mean, this is the first I'm hearing about.
Um...
What's with the short timeline?
Uh, it's just how it's developed. We started this replating process in January with the owners and with the city as well. As we've worked through it, he had a purchase agreement, I think, in as early as February with these buyers, and just as we've worked through the process and run into different issues, it's had to been pushed back and pushed back, and looking for alternatives and looking for best case, best case solutions. And, you know, August, we were finally able to get some contractors who would talk to us, they were just not calling us back for a while. We, I've got estimates for 95% of the work and commitments to do it, but all of the contractors are telling us December, January, and they want their candidate before that. So the intent was to do the work, have it done, make the sale, move forward, it just hasn't come together.
Well, I think just as long as all the parties understand that, you know, our city staff already has more than enough on their plates, and that, you know, to push something like this through is, you know, just one more thing.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Do we need a, Scott?
I think that the fact that we already made a similar deal with the theater shows that we can make a deal like this work, and if another deal comes up on another chunk of the mall, then we have to deal with that one when it comes up, and, you know, maybe this water and sewer stuff has to be dealt with someday, and maybe it doesn't, but in the whole practical reality of it is, they could move in there and hook up the water and open their store without us having to tear up the floor and without having to do this, if we just have the paperwork in order. And I don't, I don't see why we would hold them up. I'd say, let's make it happen for them, and if they're willing to go ahead with those terms, and if we put some protection in there so that the city can't get stuck for a utility bill, then I'd say, let's make it work for them.
And so, we'll ask that they bring that back to the council Wednesday, the 11, Wednesday the 13th, and do we need to do that by...
There's, there's no action today to take, it's just that's...
Yep. That's helpful.
So, so there will be a, a package, I'm assuming that will be prepared, and...
Yes, so, meeting is the 13th.
7:00 AM.
So we'll want to get it, we'll get it to you, try to get it to you before then.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Alex.
Right, thank you.
And with that, I don't have any announcements. Lib, do you have any announcements? We're adjourned.